All right, welcome everyone. We are about to get underway. If you could start heading to your seats, we'll begin momentarily. All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Sutherland County Council Candidate Forum. My name is Richie Ratzak. I'm the Digital News Director at The Record Journal. I'm going to be your moderator for this evening. I wanted to start off by thanking everyone for coming out tonight. The candidates, our panelists, and all of you watching. Whenever voters get to hear directly from candidates who are competing for their votes, it helps voters make more informed decisions about who will represent them in local government. And that's a very important thing when people can have the ability to make an informed decision. So again, thank you to all the candidates and everyone for being here tonight. So, we're going to do each candidate at the end. We'll be able to do a one-minute closing statement. But in the beginning, we're going to launch right into the questions in just a minute. So I was just going to quick introduce the candidates by name. You can say a little wave when I say your name. So on the, just to my right here, we have Mike Del Santo on the Republican side, and Jennifer Clock, and William Dietzick, and Paul Chablinsky, and Jim Morelli, and Tony Morrison. On the other table, we have the Democratic candidates. We have Jack Perry, Dave Zoney, Val DiPaolo, Steve Salerno, Ed Pocock, and Chris Palmieri had a prior engagement that's keeping him a little bit. He's actually on the other side of town at the other middle school, but he's going to try and make it as soon as he can and he'll be joining us when he arrives. So, the forum, how it's going to work. So when asked a question, a table will have two minutes to give an answer. You can split up your time, or you can pick one person. It goes by table, and then the other table will have a one-minute rebuttal, and then we'll alternate on each question. So if Republicans were to get the question first, they would start with two minutes. Democrats will get a one-minute response. Then the next question, Democrats would start and get a two-minute response, or a two-minute answer, and the Republicans would get a one-minute response. And we'll go back and forth, back and forth on those questions as we go along. So, we have a panel down in front of four people that are going to be asking the questions, starting with our Record Journalist, Sutherland reporter Jesse Buchanan. And then we have three students from Sutherland High School. We have Chelsea Arguini, we have Uptersing, and Acre Nguyen. And they've also come up with their own questions. And the other question, many of our questions actually came from readers through our Voices Initiative, where we pose the question, "What do you want the candidates to be talking about as they compete for your vote?" We actually got a lot of questions, which I was very excited about. It'll be including those throughout the evening. So, without further ado, we can jump right into it. And Jesse will be asking the first question. And we did a coin toss before the start, to determine the order. And so the Democrats will go first.
All right, hello. First question is probably one we've talked about a lot. "What's the right approach to development, both residential and commercial? What's the council's role in responding to residents' concerns over traffic, particularly on Queen Street and West Street and other main roads?"
Good evening. Thank you for the question, Jesse. So I think that there's a lot to that. We have spoken about that a lot. So, we want to look to our town's plan of conservation and development, and make sure that we're looking at what the community is looking to do as far as development. Residential development, I have been hearing from a number of residents that they feel that there is too much residential development that is going on. They would like to see that slowed down or even stopped. So we have to look at that. What would the impact be of doing that? Commercial development and industrial development could be very good for our town. Industrial development can bring in money to the taxes. It doesn't put the stress on the schools. So I think we would have to, for residential development and commercial and industrial development, really look to what our community wants and try to take all those factors into consideration. You had asked about traffic. And of course, we do hear that. We hear traffic on Queen Street, and now traffic on West Street is really getting difficult. So I do think we have to, we have to take that into consideration. And how much development do we want to see? There's safety issues as far as our intersections on West Street, and we have talked about that on a number of occasions. So I think there's a lot of factors with that question. And I would really like to, you know, look to what the residents are looking for, but possibly slow down or even put a moratorium on the residential development.
All right, and then over to the Republican side.
So I am so proud to have chaired and implement our 10-year Plan of Conservation and Development, where our residents spoke, and they said the number-one issue of their concern was development. And we have to focus development. And how do we do that? We grow our grand list, and our grand list has grown 15% over the past four years. And we have to be careful. We have to put industrial where industrial belongs. We have to preserve our neighborhoods. Neighborhood preservation must be a priority. And these are the ways that we can help curb overdevelopment. We address traffic by ease and access management and addressing those concerns, because traffic concerns were part of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And so we do things efficiently and proactively to ease those concerns, like for example, the ease-access management on Queen Street.
All right, thank you. And then Jesse will ask the next question, and it goes to Republicans first.
Next question's about tax rate. Sutherland's mill rate is 30.36. That compares to 29.56 in Berlin, 29.34 in Wallingford, and 35.09 in Cheshire. So what's a good tax level for Sutherland residents? Is the town undertaxing or overtaxing at this point?
Yeah, thanks Jesse. Appreciate it. And thanks for coming tonight, and I mean all of us. Thanks. Yeah, in terms of the tax rate, the tax rate is unique, pretty much, to a particular community. And what we do here is to keep it as low as possible, which means under the rate of inflation. And the reason for that is because, A, we want to have efficient government, okay? We don't want to have government that can spend whatever money it wants. Number two, we need to have a lower tax rate in order to develop essentially businesses. Our grand list grows every year, and that's another reason why the grand list, you know, why our taxes are lower, because the grand list grows. So everything is connected. Now, in terms of the services we provide, you also have to balance that against the tax races of, to make sure the services are fully funded, okay? Now what we do with that is every year, we look at the services, we see what we need, and we fund them. And we did that this year with the budget. Even though we had the highest inflation in 40 years, as well as a whole other bunch of issues that hit us, we funded our services whole. We funded it correctly, and we raised the tax rate. Sorry, we raised the mill rate. Our taxes have gone up just 4.6% in the last four years, and that's it. While the rate of inflation cumulative today has been 19% over the same period. That's since 2020. And as far as the mill rate goes, we've had other reasons to keep the taxes down. We had a revaluation two years ago, and we cut our mill rate by two points. Because we had extra money, we wanted to keep the same taxes from us, but if we allowed the mill rate to go up, we would have collected extra taxes. So that's the gift we had to the taxpayers. In fact, four years ago, our mill rate was 30.63.
And it's timed.
Today, our mill rate is 30.36.
There's the timer, in case the candidates haven't noticed, there's the timer in the front here. And then over to Democrats.
Hi, my name's Ed Pocock. Hey, let me answer that for a minute. What I hear at the doors, and we've hit over 7,000 doors, is people are upset because their taxes went through the roof, period, bar none. They don't want to hear about all the gibberish about tax rates and mill rates. We all know as politicians, that's where we hide. The reality of the matter is, the town has sucked from the COVID dollars crack pipe for the last three, four years. And the reality is, they use that money to balance the budget, and keep it down as low as they can, and put that towards operational. Everyone knew on the Board of Finance that they were heading towards a fiscal cliff. Everyone knew it. And the architect of that fiscal cliff was Tony Morrison, the one who answered the question. And I might add, not only did the Finance Board know about it, they came up with a budget that determined whether or not that could be protected. And Mr. Morrison went around the Finance Board to the Town Council to override that. That's the reality of why your taxes are through the roof today. That needs to stop. There used to be a partnership between these boards when you worked on taxes. That partnership, for whatever reason, has disappeared.
All right, well, we're going to be coming right back to it. The very next question comes from Katie via our Voices Initiative. And she asks, "This year, Sutherland enacted the largest tax increase in years at 4.2%. Meanwhile, the state of Connecticut was able to offer the largest tax cut in years. Surrounding towns with similar economic profiles, including Berlin, Cheshire, Wallingford, Weathersfield, Bristol, Farmington, and Glastonbury, has either had no tax increase or much lower increases in the range of 1 to 2.2%. Why was Sutherland unable to do the same?" This one, because we started with Republicans last time, goes to Democrats first.
Well, I think it comes down to communication. And I'm not going to use all of my time. I'm going to make sure Jack Perry's dying to answer some of his questions, too. I could see him down there biting at the bit. But the reality here is, it's about communication, and that's what the important part here is. If you don't have that, you don't have anything. And when the Board of Finance comes up with decisions to do something right, like Bristol, for instance, not to take Jack's thing away, but he's been saying to me all the time, "Why did Bristol lower their mill rate? Why were they capable of doing that? Better planning?" That's probably what it was. Jack, go ahead, because I know you have a bunch.
Thank you. Jack Perry. So, I serve on the Self-Insurance Committee. And what I saw the first term on serving on that is, we were taking reserves. And taking reserves sounds good, but it's also, you know, you're not covering current debt services. And it really upset me when we were taking the reserves and we're not giving back to our town staff. Our self-insurance is funded 80/20 split roughly. And when we're using a million dollars, that's 200,000 of town staff's money that they weren't going to get back. I started advocating that it's the right thing to do. As a small business owner, I make sure I take care of my employees as well as my customers. And what I've seen, you know, and how I got involved, is the town of Sutherland only budgets for two years out. We don't have really a long-term plan, and that's when you run into these fiscal cliffs. And we had COVID relief funds. Look at what Governor Lamont has done, you know, a tax decrease. You know, Bristol lowered their mill eight mills. And every town that was also mentioned lowered their mill rates. So Sutherland is heading in the wrong direction. And unfortunately, you know, we're in the minority. There's only three Democrats on the council, and we're constantly reminded that we're in the minority. We lost. Me, Chris, and Val voted against both tax increases, and we didn't even have a voice at any of those things, because we were told that we lost and we don't have a voice and nobody to represent. Thank you.
All right, over to Republicans.
Yeah, it's hard to respond to that, because that's, well, I won't go into details, okay? But I will say this. They've said that we have essentially a failing fiscal system. Now, all of you know that's not true, okay? All of you know our reserves are the highest they've ever been. All of you know that we funded our services in a time of inflation. And all of you know that your taxes went up 4.6% in four years. It was zero for the first three years. Now, but rather than me talk about it, or Republicans, I'll just quote some other people, some financial people who are outside observers of us. One is our auditors. Our auditors, in their last audit report, said our finances were excellent, okay? Period. They didn't say that we were on the edge of a fiscal cliff, which they would have had to if we were. Secondly, our bond, people who bought our debt, Citigroup Global Services, they pay us 3.4%. That's less than the rate for 20 years of others. Because our finances are so good, we can pay our debt back.
All right, the next question is one of our student questions from Upters.
All right, so just to start off with a little bit of a fun question from the students. How many of the candidates here tonight attended Sutherland High School? And what is your fondest memory of high school?
That goes to Republicans first.
All right, I'm just going to test this mic. Thank you, I appreciate that question. I attended Sutherland High School. Anyone else, whoever, put your hands up. This debate's pretty fun. We got one ad hominem attack and a COVID crack pipe reference already. So we'll see where this night's going to go. My fondest memory, and I'm going to sound like a jock here. My finest memory of Sutherland High School is winning a state championship in 1998. And we're actually having our 25th, it's crazy to think it's 25 years, our 25th celebration or anniversary coming up. So I love that question. I think about that. High school's a great time. You guys are doing a great job coming here tonight. I think you're going to enjoy a pretty decent show. Anyone else who wants Sutherland High School, go ahead.
Yeah, I graduated in 1990 from Sutherland High School. I was at JFK as well. I played football at JFK and at Sutherland High School. Best time of my life, well, college was the best time of my life. High school was pretty great, too. But I was most proud of, I was class president my junior year and my senior year in high school. And it was a great time. We had a great group. The auditorium was being built at the time in 1990, and it opened up, I think, my senior year. But playing football and being class president and just having a great time, it was, you know, if I can go back, I'd give a finger to go back for at least one more semester. But Jim, go ahead, take it.
I'm the oldest up here. I'm a '77 high school graduate. And I have to tell you that two people in the school system influenced me for my entire life. There was a teacher at DiPaolo Junior High School, Mike Giannelli, who took an interest in me way back then. And I wasn't going to go to college. And he told Dave Germano at the high school that I wasn't going to go to college. And they both took me up to Central, introduced me to the Industrial Technology Program there, where I graduated with a bachelor's, and I practice in that industry today. And I am very thankful to them for what they did. I love the Sutherland school system.
And I'm Paul. I graduated in 1990. I graduated with Mike, and so we had, you know, a good friendship back then. One of my most fondest memories was having Mrs. Carmody as a teacher in high school.
All right, over to the Democrats.
We got a minute, so we're going to go down the line. I'm Ed Pocock, and I graduated in 1985. Absolutely loved the high school. I think it was the, Mr. Goodrich was one of my favorites anyways.
Steve Salerno, classes 1991, and Terry Carmody's class, junior year. I look forward to it every day.
Valerie DiPaolo, class of 1979, which was our town's bicentennial year. So that was really quite, quite cool.
Mr. Morelli is not the oldest one here. I was at the high school before you were born, before your father was born. I probably graduated with your grandpa in 1971. Long time ago. I have some very fond memories, mostly of band. I was a musician. And my parents, along with my wife's parents and a couple other parents, founded the Band Backers. It didn't exist, but we were founding members. And I was once the president of the Band Backers many years ago.
Jack Perry. I graduated in 2008 and went through the Southern Vocational Agriculture Program, which was the best program, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, that was great. I loved hearing those answers. The next question will be asked by Jesse.
This starts out with the Democrats. "What should or can the council do to grow the grand list? And is there anything the town leaders should avoid to encourage businesses?" What can or should the council do to grow the grand list? And is there anything the council should avoid in order to encourage businesses?
So, I serve on the Economic Strike Committee. And that's the best way of growing our grand list, is attracting businesses to our town. We do have, you know, a great community of support with the residents in our community that support all of our businesses. All of our businesses also contribute into our community with being sponsors to all of our local events. Like last weekend, you had a lot of businesses down in the Plansill area helping, you know, with Halloween in the Village. So that's how we could definitely grow our grand list. Businesses, don't send kids to school. And obviously, you know, as a small business owner, I know I pay a tremendous amount in taxes, which is fine. I pride ourselves in what we have for our police department, as well as the Southern Fire Department and our EMS services. So growing our grand list is definitely a priority. And, you know, Lou Perillo, our economic developer, he does a phenomenal job with the Economic Strike Committee, trying to attract new businesses and programs for businesses, and then goes for the steep grants at the state, trying to help businesses grow so that they pay more in taxes.
Thank you, Jack. So just a couple of things. I know, Jesse, you had asked about avoiding, things we might avoid. We've already talked about possibly avoiding some of the residential development for the grand list. But one way also for economic development and businesses is the tax abatements that we have given over the years, which helps businesses come in and have that tax abatement so that they can get started, get their business growing, and be in the community. That would be important.
Do you have 18 seconds?
I'm just going to add one thing. We do have a tremendous advantage here in Sutherland, as we have five exits off an interstate highway. That's very conducive to businesses. They want to be near their customers. They want to be near their workforce. And we offer tax abatements. Like Val said, that's the best thing we can do.
All right, then over to the Republicans.
Okay, thanks. So from 19 to 21, there was a 9.05% increase in our grand list. From 21 to 23, during a pandemic, we had a 5% increase in our grand list. We're going to continue to do that. That's our track record. That's the last four years. We bring business. We bring industry into town. We offer the steep grant when it's available. We offer tax abatements. I am the chairman of the Economic Strike Committee. They nailed it. Lou Perillo is the best in the business. Okay, he does all he can to bring business and industry into Sutherland. We have to support our Chamber of Commerce. Our Chamber of Commerce is so important in the town of Sutherland. Business and industry are members of the Chamber. They need to be supported. We have to support local business. We have to support local industry, okay? There's been so much over the last couple of years. There's a 69,000-square-foot addition to Live Well that's going on right now. There's a $90 million apartment complex that's going up on West Street that could potentially bring in over a million dollars a year in taxes. Those are the types of things that are going to increase our grand list.
All right, great. The next question is also from Jesse.
This is a school funding question, and of course, most local tax dollars do go to the school district. Sutherland is below the state average in per pupil spending and below some of the other school systems in the district reference groups, such as Wallingford and Newington. Is that concerning to you? Should there be a change to the level of per pupil spending in Sutherland? Should there be a change to how the council evaluates financial requests from the school district?
And that goes to Republicans first.
Yeah, I'll address that. I'd like to talk about what education gets from us, okay? But the last four years, and we've talked about the last four years, because it's the last four years that we've had a supermajority on each of the boards, including the Board of Education. Now, in those last four years, we've given general government everything except education. We've given them a 7.9% increase in taxes, okay? As well as that, we've given the schools, education, a 10.1% increase in their taxes, okay? We favor the schools, and there are certain reasons why we do that, okay? Certain reasons, because they are people-intensive. I mean, we're talking about teachers. We funded 26 extra teachers in the last four years, because we want to keep the class sizes down, okay? Now, in addition, in addition to that, we also take care of the people who are seriously challenged among us. Our special education, we spend 28% of what we give to the education system. It goes to special education, 28%. It's the highest of any town I could find in Connecticut. 28% is higher than everything. Now, what do we get for that? Well, we get marks according to the state BOE that are up there with essentially everybody else. And that's what we focus on. We get a decent curriculum that's based on, you know, basic educational stuff, reading, writing, arithmetic, but obviously, there's a lot other than that. We have decent AAP classes. We graduate in 90% of our students, and we have a proportion of about 80% that go on to college. That's what we get for it. Now, if people criticize our spending, then what we do is, we concentrate on efficiency of spending, not on overall dollars. Overall dollars doesn't incent education. What you do with it does.
Over to Democrats.
We have, one of the things that I was proud of back when I was on the council was we created a partnership, because the parents didn't trust the way we were doing our educational budgets. And I've seen that trust, based on who I talked to at the doors, being eroded. Parents today, when you talk to them, they're like, "Why are we back to this political game again, where the football's tossed back to the Board of Education, and there's no communication taking place?" The biggest thing that we could have happen, and it'll be detrimental to our school system, is losing our parents' trust. And that's what's happening. And so, party aside, you have to sit back and you have to communicate with all the different boards. And what I've noticed is that's been deteriorating over time. And it's unhealthy for the system. And ultimately, it's unhealthy for the kids. And ultimately, everybody loses. I have a lot of people that we talk to, they're upset about the safety cuts at the school that could have been there, that weren't. And a lot of it has to do, because there's a lot of gamesmanship taking place with the budgeting on schools, and it's disappointing.
All right, and Jesse has the next question as well.
And this one starts off with the Democrats. "What are the factors contributing to a rise in auto crimes and other criminal activity involving juveniles? And what can the town council do about it?"
Well, the rise in crime with juveniles, they walked back to juvenile laws a few years back, and that didn't help, so what happened? It enabled juveniles to go out and commit crimes that they know they're really not going to get in trouble for. The rise in crime, I'm not going to blame COVID or anything else. I think it goes back to the walking back the age on juvenile crimes. I mean, and it just, it became something that's going on and on and gotten worse in all the suburbs. So it's not just unique to Sutherland. And it goes on several other laws. You can't stop stolen cars, pursuit laws. It gets very, very complicated. But when you start eroding the age for juvenile accountability, holding them accountable for laws, it just, it bleeds into other things. And here, it just gets worse and worse. And that's why we ended up with the rise in juvenile crime, serious juvenile crime, that is.
You know, let's not be mistaken here. Juvenile court system has been broken since I was a rookie officer in 1989. Anybody who's had any experience with the juvenile court system knows that to be the truth. That's not the only problem we have today. We have a culture today in which, if you beat your neighbor with a baseball bat and you put it on Facebook, you get a lot of likes. Socially, we have a lot of problems that are going on that are not all about laws. They're about how people feel about other people. And I see a lot of that going on. We saw a lot of that back, I mean, I've been off the job now nine years, 10 years. And I remember going to calls before social media was big, and that wasn't the big thing, to record a shooting on your phone or do things like that. So when people point to just the laws, it's a far deeper problem than that. It's not just the laws. It's where we are, about how much we love each other and how much we don't love each other, is really what it comes down to.
All right, over to the Republican side.
Yeah, I think raise the age was the real issue back in 2010 and 11, when crime was decreasing steadily up until raise the age. Our state legislators changed the raise the age law, and we started to see crime continue to go up, auto thefts continuing to go up. So we can make all the excuses in the book. The bottom line is, we are dealt with the hand that the state legislators have given us. They are weak on crime, and now we have to pay for it. We have 300,000 unfunded mandates because of the Police Accountability Bill. What are we doing? We funded two police officers. We have regular meetings with our community. I sat with the chairwoman and other existing council members with our recent hotel owners to talk about how we can help them prevent, and also, when something happens, what they can do to report those. We have invested in technology and infrastructure. And so here, it's a community-based system, but it's also investing in our police force. We've invested with them in training and tools, and we hope to continue to do that.
All right, great. The next question came in through our, is another reader question that came in through our Voices Initiative, asked by Michelle. And it goes to Republicans first. "Do you believe that Sutherland..."
first. Do you believe that Southington needs more affordable housing? Do you believe there should be a pause on residential development in Southington? Can or should the town work to expand the town's housing authorities inventory?
So I will bring it up all night long, but I am so proud that I was able to chair our town's Plan of Conservation and Development, which is basically coming from our residents' concerns, creating an action plan. And the truth is that the state puts a one-size-fits-all hand in our pocket. And they decide what Southington needs. Southington does not have an affordable housing issue. In fact, we have 46.99% of naturally occurring affordable housing, but the state says otherwise because it's not technically deeded. Southington has done a fantastic job about creating a very diverse housing stock through our Planning and Zoning Commission, through our action plan, and our Plan of Conservation and Development. And these are all the ways that we efficiently govern. We don't need the state of Connecticut telling us that we need 10% affordable housing on a technicality, okay? Our Southington community thrives, and we have a great diverse housing stock.
And if I see that we have Planning and Zoning Commissioners here, the chairman's here, I wanted to commend Jen and the Planning and Zoning Commission because they're also passing regulations to create affordable senior housing. They are working to create open space subdivisions versus traditional subdivisions to ensure that more land is set aside. And so I also wanted to recognize the people who are actively and strategically looking at how do we create a diverse portfolio of housing opportunities in Southington, even though the state continues to mandate otherwise.
Let's not forget, we have an open space committee. And over in the last four years, over 300 acres of open space purchased by the taxpayers of Southington.
Great. And then over to the Democrats.
Valerie DePaolo. So I have to differ with my colleagues on the other side. I think there is, there is different housing that is needed in our town. We need more senior housing. We definitely need more senior housing. And with the housing authority, my understanding is that we have not had new housing authority buildings since 1984. So the housing authority needs to be looked at, and there should be more, there should be more housing for, with the housing authority. Senior housing, there are a number of residents that live on a fixed income. There are disabled individuals. There is also, we did the Fair Rent Commission. We went through that quite a bit this term. And the residents at some communities where they have their, they own their mobile home, but they pay a land lease. And those land leases are being increased, sometimes exorbitantly under their circumstances. And so then they are not able to afford their place to live. And this may be the last place that they go to live.
All right, and Jesse has the next question. We'll go to the Democrats first.
So this question is about the library. Should the library project have gone back out to referendum when costs came in higher than the budget authorized by voters? How should the additional $5 million in state funds be used on that project?
Yes, Jack Perry. So I had the honor of serving on the planning committee for the library. At first, I thought a library was outdated. I realized quickly that a library is a community center and learned so much from public input. We had so many events or meetings to get input from the community on what they thought the library should be. And it was just disheartening because I was put on when there was the majority of the Democrats. They put me on based on my background of building things. And when our chair of the council charged us and said, build a library for 12 million, I'm like, well, it's not doable based on what we heard. The bare minimums was $17 million is what we came up with. The state, you know, got behind us. They were willing to give us a million dollars. Me and Val held a listening event, and we heard from residents. Some residents that voted originally against the library want to see the project done right, so they would vote for an increase of funding. Me, Chris, and Val, we asked to have a hearing at the council, trying to delay it so that we could hear. State Rep. Chris Pulis delivered us $5 million with his hard work. And if we did pause it, we wouldn't have a foundation already built.
I just wanted to expand on that as well. That we did, as a Democratic caucus, we stayed very consistent. And we did try to push for either going back for referendum, pausing the project, going back to the Board of Finance, which we were told would be an option. And the majority on the council just did not want to do that. So a huge thank you to State Rep. Christopher Pulis. We hear from the diocese very often in our council meetings that the Dems in Hartford are doing this, they're doing that, they're bad. Well, a Dem in Hartford got us $5 million for the library. So that's a really good thing.
Then over to the Republicans.
Let's look at some facts. The plan that you had was about a six-year-old plan. It was a big old plan, at 30,000 square feet for about $17 million. So it was six years old. So it was decided that there was a $12 million allotment in our budget, because we run our town on a budget, to build a library. Through successive negotiations, we all agreed that we would allow 17 million for the library. Every day that we stop, we lose money. And so the fact of the matter is, we're building a new library. If we stop and we pause, even for a month, we lose money. We run the risk of having an even smaller building. The other side of this is, if we went back to referendum to get 20 million, let's say, well, because we don't know what the number would be, right? We want 30,000 square feet, 19 would probably not be enough. We'd be more like 22, 24 million. The voters could have shot that down, and you'd have no library right now. So again, I think that what we've done so far is phenomenal. The people in town will love this new library. And we do appreciate Mr. Pulis's $5 million. It's going to make it a much nicer project.
A lot of love for the library. Jesse has the next question. It's go to the Republican side first.
This is also to Republicans. Under town charter, any bond authorization in excess of $1 million must go to referendum. Is this the right threshold, or does the town council need more flexibility when it comes to spending on projects?
I guess I'll start it, and then I'm sure Tony Morrison wants to talk about it. I actually find the million-dollar number to be a little low. I understand, you know, documents sometimes need to evolve. That's not a reference to the Constitution, if anyone's taking anything, but at least for the respect to our town charter. And I do think a million dollars, as I said on the sewer committee, we consistently round that number for things like sewer pump upgrades, things like that, where I understand you want to put a $50 million sewer plant to referendum, you want to put a $25 million school, you want to put a, an allocation towards roads, a library, those things absolutely show at a referendum. I do think maybe a future council at some point should adjust and look at that referendum number, and maybe it should be adjusted upwards. That's just my opinion. But it does seem sometimes where the million-dollar numbers, a million dollars now doesn't buy you what it did in 1995, whenever the charter was originally drafted.
I'll just add something quickly, which is, I think the million-dollar number is outdated in current times, okay? And the reason being is, I mean, I liked it a few years ago in the sense that it allows all of you to vote on serious, you know, serious items, you know, over a million dollars. And they're mostly, you know, the infrastructure building items. But I like that. But in the last two or three years, we've seen inflation erode everything. And that includes the million-dollar targets. Now, we, on the Board of Finance, we upped our reserves to account for that. Our minimum level is now 11%. It used to be 10%. So we've changed that already, and I think we need to change other things, too. And by the way, we changed that by going to the town council and asking for it in public. Nobody went behind people's backs and did something, as was mentioned earlier this evening. Everything's done in public.
All right, then over to the Democratic side.
Just to answer that briefly, the charter is what creates the million-dollar number. It's been in the charter. It's gone up over the years. We have charter revision multiple times. It was our founding fathers' way of saying that we know things are going to change, and we know you're going to have to change with the times. It has come up. It's gone up. I mean, I think the first charter, when it came out, it was some low, really low number, like $50,000. You had to vote on it. It's a million now. I chaired a charter revision committee. I thought we should index it to something, whether it would be CPI or something like that. So we didn't have to keep revisiting it all the time. You know, pretty soon, we'll be having a referendum to buy a fire truck. I mean, it's just, it's just not the right thing to do. It's not good government. I would have fixed it. Thank you.
All right, great. And then our next question is from one of our students. Chelsea, you go ahead. This will go to Democrats first.
Recently, there has been a lot in the news about the teacher shortages across the country. It is often said that teachers are not nearly compensated enough for their work. Do you feel Southington teachers are compensated fairly? And if not, what would you do to help raise teachers' salaries?
With the teachers, the teacher's job has gotten increasingly harder over the years. And one of the things that I think is important, and I know Jack has heard a lot at the doors on this that we all have for that matter, concerning how teachers are, well, number one, the biggest thing we hear is teachers want to feel safe. We hear that all the time. That's one of the biggest concerns they have on their mind. I see Bob Brown shaking his head. Yep, that's right. You hear that about the teachers. The pay a lot of times is determined based on a step system. A lot of people, unless you've been on the Board of Education and been part of it, it's done in a step system. And a lot of the pay is determined by how the union determines where they're going to be in the steps. So that matters a lot, too. I think my biggest fear is the newest teachers that are coming on board sometimes get forgotten. And then what ends up happening is you have these people who normally would stay around, they leave for greener pasture somewhere else. And I don't want good teachers leaving Southington for greener pasture somewhere else. And I hear that story over and over again. I think there needs to be fairness for people that are coming on and spent all that money on education to dedicate themselves to our students. And they're not making what they need to be making.
Thank you. Yeah, so again, the teacher needs a bachelor's degree to teach, and they do a lot for our students. They do it out of the kindness of their heart. Chris Palmeri, he'll be here soon. He was my middle school teacher, and you could see how much he gives back to the community volunteers. Terry Carmody was my teacher in the high school. And they were awesome teachers. And you could just tell they do it from the kindness of their heart. And it's just discouraging to hear at the doors from residents that are teachers feeling that they're not feeling safe. The town has cut budgets on safety, and they're using their own money to buy school supplies or supplies for the classrooms. And we need to stop that. That's embarrassing. Thank you.
So full disclosure, my wife is a teacher. She's a fourth grade teacher, so I may have a little bias. I would say, to answer the question succinctly, yes, I do think our teachers need to be paid more. They do way more than anybody thinks. So just to answer it straightforward, I think so. I would disagree with the side a little bit. I do think, two things. Number one, our Board of Ed has done a great job. They've started the process. They recognize that we have an issue, and they started to correct salaries through the budget process in the last year or two. But we need to do more. You know, one of the, I'm really proud that we're 100% filled. That's very unusual. Towns across the state have a shortage. Southington has filled most of their, all their positions at the beginning of this year. But we have a problem with retaining teachers. And I think I would ask the Board of Education to look at, how do we continue to incentivize our teachers to stay, so that they are staying in the community and not forcing us to look at new folks? So it's across the board. We need higher salaries, but we need to incentivize our teachers to stay because those salary bands, I think, are a little bit outdated.
Just real quick. So yeah, I coach first and second graders in flag football. I'm not sure we could afford, as a tax base, to pay the teachers if they actually got paid what they were worth.
All right, and then Jesse has the next question, which will go to Republicans first.
The Board of Education is studying the future of Kelly, Deronoski, and Flanders Elementary Schools. One plan recommended by a consultant replaces Kelly with a new building, renovate Deronoski, and close Flanders. What is your view of the future of these three schools, and what should happen to the Flanders property if the school is closed?
That's Republicans first.
Yeah, I would say we definitely have to upgrade the schools. I think it's got to be a community decision. It's got to be, you know, something, I know we started the process at the Board of Ed level, and I think that there maybe was some misalignment that, you know, we thought, they thought that they were going one direction. They had some new statistics coming in. So I think the plan now is to revisit that. Hopefully, in the next cycle, the new Board of Education, whoever that is, starts to take a good look at those three schools. But I will say, whatever's left, those things are in dire need of repair. So I went to Kelly School. It was West Ridge, and it looks the same today as it did back then. It's no fault of the Board of Ed. But I think that, you know, we do need to take a look at that. I wanted to address one comment. It is downright wrong to claim that we defunded school safety. I want to say that this year's budget, we funded school safety in full. We funded it more than what was asked by the Board of Education, in fact. More than 700,000 in school safety was funded this year. We just did it in a different way than the other side would like to see it done. We did it so that it was a minimal impact to the taxpayers, and we're going to continue to fund school safety going forward.
I just want to say one quick point, which is that I heard from my colleagues over here that we don't do planning. Well, we do, of course. We have a five-year capital plan, and we vote on that every year. Now, they must have missed it because they didn't vote for our budget, didn't vote on it at all. But in that capital plan, we have $120 million set aside for these three projects, okay? We're planning on doing it because it's the last three schools that have to be remediated in some sense. We've had this project for 10, 20 years. We're going to finish it. We're Republicans. You tell us what to do. We finish things.
Okay, so when we did the middle schools, that we have the enjoyment of sitting in here tonight, we promised the parents that we were going to come up with a long-term plan for schools way back. All the people agreed. All parties agreed. Flanders, Kelly, and Deronoski, Deronoski less so, but definitely Flanders and Kelly, because everything that Paul said is right. It's forgotten. The Flanders school hasn't changed since I went there. I didn't vandalize anything while I was there, so I couldn't see if there was any marks on the walls still or anything. But it's bad. They haven't done anything to the school. And the bottom line is, we need to do something different and make sure, first off, the Board of Ed has to have a redistricting plan. They haven't redistricted in years. You're not going to be able to make any determin, and those are hard decisions, I might add, but they haven't been done in years. There's no way you're going to make a decision on doing schools until you do that. So everything that's talked to this point is meaningless until that's done. And the Board of Ed needs to do their job on that, and they haven't done it. And that's the reason why it's delayed.
Just one quick addition. People come to Southington and settle in Southington for a reason. They want to raise their family here. And schools are a very important part of that. When they're raising a family, they have children, they're going to go to our schools. They love neighborhood schools. It's a big plus for the town of Southington, and it's an economic development factor for that matter. That's why people come here.
All right, the next question is from one of our student guests here. I agree. Take it away. And this goes to the Democrats first.
In terms of budget, what are your priorities, and where do you feel the money should be allocated the most? Yeah, of course. In terms of budget, what are your priorities, and where do you feel money should be allocated the most?
Thank you. So in my opinion, what I'm hearing at the doors is that public safety is a must. We need to fund our police department. Our chief wanted an extra officer this year, and it was cut from the budget. Me, Chris, and Val, we fought trying to add an officer a few meetings ago. We have the money because we have surplus from another line item. And that got politicized, unfortunately. Schools, we just heard the previous questions, we need to be investing in our schools, or how home values are based off our school system. And when I hear that we have all this, we have big bonding coming up, and that's a concern of that fiscal cliff, that, again, we're not properly funding things for the future. We're looking two years out for the next election. We have to stop doing that. We have to start planning longer term. And then our town's infrastructure, which, again, schools fall into that, but it's also our roads. You know, I hear from the residents that they want to see our roads done properly. We got away from chip ceiling, thank God. That was horrible. But I was on Parkview Drive. Eversource dug up one whole side of Parkview Drive. And residents, every door I hit up there, they were upset about the road being torn up. I worked with town staff. They reassured Eversource is paving that whole lane. I said, well, that's good for this year, but what happens to the other lane when we have the frost heaves in the center? The other lane's going to get beat up, too. We need to start planning more long-term. We need to start planning more long-term, do both lanes, do it once, do it right. And, again, it's like, it's, short-term planning is like patching your roof, you know? Your plywood's going to get damaged. We have to stop doing that and start funding things properly.
I just want to say one thing about a budget. No matter where you are, a budget is a moral document. It tells what you stand for, what you care about, what kind of people live there, where you want to spend your money. People in Southington is suburban. They want good schools, good roads, good parks. They want good public safety. That's what they want. That's how they should get it.
I agree. A budget is a moral document. And I want to stand here to say, that moral document was violated by the Democrats this year. You know why? Because they refused to put up a budget proposal at the town council. They refused. We asked them two or three times on the dais, "Do you have a proposal for a budget?" They didn't. We made a suggestion for a budget. They voted no. What does that mean? What does that mean to the moral fabric of the budget that Dave just talked about? Bonding. Jack talked about bonding. You know, in one breath, we say that we have huge bonds coming up, and the other breath, they say that they don't want to fund our capital expense. Did you know that they voted no to fund our debt this year? No. What does that mean? Bankrupt sign for Southington if we didn't fund our debt. So we've paved, we've paved 17 miles of roads this year. We've paid, in the last three years. We have $3 million next year. We're going to pave more roads. We did 21 miles of sewer pipe upgrades to our infrastructures. We put $3 million into our parks. We're going to continue to fund that, and we're going to continue education.
The next question is from another one of our reader questions. And so we'll go to Republican side first. Do you believe we should fly flags other than the American, Connecticut, POW, MIA on town property? Do you agree with recent changes made to the policy for flying flags on town property?
I guess I'll take this one. So I'm really proud of our ordinance committee for how we handle this issue. So if you walked in tonight, you saw the Democrat signs, right? So what we're trying to avoid is an issue where, you know, you're putting signs up like that in a public forum that could be offensive to people. So this is pre Sherliffe versus the City of Boston, which is the Seminole flag case. The First Amendment case came out, 9-0 opinion. So there's really no, you can't really be on the left or right of this opinion. So what we did as an ordinance committee, and this predates that decision, is that, and I do want to say, you know, when they raised the pride flag, it was a great ceremony. I attended it. But we saw the slippery slope that possibly would happen with other petitions for flags that could come up. So what we did as a committee is we got together and we said, "You know what? We're not going to fly any flag other than the American flag and, I believe, the POW flag." But it took some courage as a committee to make that decision. That was right around the war, the Russian invasion of Ukraine. You know, it was difficult to say, "We're not going to fly a Ukrainian flag." But thanks to the prudence of the ordinance committee and, you know, what was basically justified by Sherliffe versus the City of Boston, you know, I think our flag policy, which has now been adopted by multiple municipalities in the state of Connecticut, was probably one of the best moments that we had as a council with respect to First Amendment issues.
It's about, you know, political opinions. Opinions don't belong at our government institutions. What you see for the signs that are out there today, with the Democrats putting their signs out there violates Section 1335 of the Board of Education ordinance in Southington. They came here and put their signs out. These type of things are meant to distract that and to stop that type of political nonsense in our schools and in our town buildings. We don't need that here. So we're proud of that, and I'm tired of the nonsense that people say that Republicans are against the pride community. This Republican council drafted and passed the only pride resolution in the town of Southington's history.
Over to Democrats.
As a veteran of the United States Air Force, I've always been a believer in the fact that the only flags that should be displayed on the town green are the American flag, the POW flag, and MIA flag until all of them are home and they're buried in the United States along with the Connecticut flag. I've always stood for that, and it always should be that. I think it's a little dangerous and a little disingenuous, though, to tout an ordinance when there was a rally on the town green recently, and it's just as emotional. Listen, I've got friends that live in Israel. I get calls from them telling me about the atrocities that took place there. But that doesn't mean you go to the town green and you put up an Israeli flag, because the ordinance says you don't do that. And that's exactly what was done. This is exactly what we're trying to stop. So when I get told about signs out here, just to give a little excitement to the event that we're having here tonight, that somehow that's bad. It's no better than what was done recently on the town green, displaying a flag when it was against the ordinance.
Jesse has the next question, and it goes to the Democrats first.
What is your view of the current state of political discourse in town? Can the two parties still reach consensus on important issues when it comes to time, when it comes time to govern in light of the discord we've seen during this particular election season?
Real fast, when you get elected, it's a council of nine. That's how I view it.
We're doing this to represent the town of Southington. Town of Southington, town above party, for the town. That's why we're doing this, this team right here, for the town first.
Jesse, thank you for that question. So having been on the town council now for four years and sitting in a super minority, it is difficult, right? It's six to three, and it's very difficult to be advocating and to be pushing for the things that we believe some of our residents really do need. So I do think in our country, in our state, in our town, there is a lot of, we're not getting along. Where people are saying that, "Can't you get along? Can't you work together? Can't you do things in a bipartisan manner?" And I really think that our town needs that. I think our town needs to be more unified, more inclusive, and that is on us. That's on all of us. I feel that, over these last four years, I always have felt like it's been a town council sometimes of six. And it hasn't been a council of nine. And we need to, as a council, whether we win or lose, we're sitting in a minority or the majority, we need to be able to work together and do what is best for the residents of our town. At this time in our history, and at this time in our town, I really do believe we need that. There are residents here that I probably have very different political views from, but I respect you, and I think we, as a team, respect you, and we need to listen to you. And maybe there's some way that we can meet in the middle. It's a difficult thing to do because we all want to win, right? We all want to be, have it be our way, or it's the highway. So, very good question, Jesse. I hope that we're able to bring that around for our town.
Over to the Republicans.
So I think this is a great question. We need to build strong relationships, and, but we also need solutions from both sides. And we need to work with each other, but we also need to work with our police department. We need to work with our town manager, our town staff. It's a community effort. Everybody needs to respect one another, come together, build strong relationships. And we need solutions, and we need solutions brought forth.
Thank you, Jen. Great question. I've been accused of not being collaborative. I disagree with that. But I served my first four years in politics in 2001. I served on a super minority on the Planning and Zoning Commission for four years. I couldn't get an idea across, but I knew my place, and I worked hard. And I overcame that, and by 2009, I was the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's been a super majority on the Planning and Zoning Commission since. Okay? We work hard. We make decisions based on what's best for Southington.
And then there's a reader question next, and it's actually very similar. How do you plan to work across party lines to build consensus and advance priorities such as housing, education, public transportation for the citizens of Southington? Now, go to the Republicans first.
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, I think we have to continue the subcommittee approach that we have. I think the subcommittee approach continues to empower the teams, to invite the community to come out to subcommittees and to the council and to the various boards. And I think we have to continue to challenge ourselves to listen to, you know, each other's perspectives. I wanted to recognize, you know, Val and I worked on the, I wasn't very happy about, you know, some of the things that have been come down from the state. One thing that we, Val and I worked on was the Fair Rent Commission. It was a little, you know, give and take on both sides. You know, last night, Jack and I, we had a little bit of a, we had a little disagreement on our bid process. Jack and I talked about on the dais, you know, maybe some common ground and how we might, in the future, recommend other councils to continue to look at that. You know, there's always room for improvement. So I would continue to encourage us to continue to talk, use subcommittees, and, yeah, continue that approach.
Yeah, real quick. I mean, I think if you really took a statistical analysis of the votes that we take as a council or subcommittees or other boards, we're likely, it's very nonpartisan. Candidly, you have 12 extremely competitive people, and Chris Palmieri joined us. Just want to say hi, Chris. You have 12 very competitive people up here, and that sometimes when you put us to issues, you're going to get, you know, conflict. But I really think if you looked at across the subcommittees, across the boards, the majority of our decisions, we govern bipartisan. It's just some of the issues we don't agree on.
Yeah, I can say something. Yeah. The board I'm on, the Board of Finance, 95% of the decisions are bipartisan, period. Okay? What is not is the 5% is attached to certain things that are somewhat unique to each party. Okay? We believe in free speech, free markets, let the front, free market do the thing. It may not be the case on the other side. So certain things like that, and it comes up in the budget, because everything comes up in the budget. And we have a particular approach as Republicans. The Democrats have an approach. I don't know what it was this year because they didn't vote on anything. But we certainly have an approach.
That's time.
So that's exactly how we would not be able to work together, right? Let's try to get along. Let's try to be kind to each other. Let's try to be respectful of each other. Right? We keep hearing that over and over again. So, yes, the 5% that we don't agree on are generally the emotional issues, and that is going to happen. We have very strong personalities. We all want it to go our way, and that is the challenge. The challenge is to say, "I need to take a step back. I need to look at the other side. I might not be happy about it, but I need to do that, and I need to stop doing that kind of stuff."
I would just like to say that being bipartisan, being acceptable to the other side of the aisle and working together comes naturally to me. In fact, I've been accused of being too bipartisan, quite frankly. I try to make friends. I try to listen to people's opinion. If we all did that, we all going to have to see each other in the grocery store at some point. We don't want to go, you know, looking at someone, "Well, can I talk to them?" Now, I might have got them mad. I've been in this level of government. I've been in the state level of government. I made just as many friends with Republicans there as I did with my Democratic members. So I'll try to do my best to teach these folks how to do that across the board here. Thank you.
All right. The next question is also from, a reader question from our Voices Initiative. This will go to the Democrats first. Both parties have said they will work to provide more support for seniors and disabled individuals in our town. How would you advocate for fair and affordable access to housing and transportation?
Well, I guess I'll start off with, one of the things that needs to happen, it was touched on before, is senior housing. People shouldn't have to pay for dignity outrageously, and that's one of the issues that we have going on. We have not added on to senior housing. When you say senior housing, that's a touchy thing, too, because when you mention it, everybody thinks of 55 and older complexes, and then ultimately, you've got to pay for that dignity. There's a lot of people I've met in town over the years and gone to their doors, they can't afford to pay for that dignity and die decently. They've got to live in situations where that's their next step before they die. Literally, just let that sink in for a minute. That's their last place before they see heaven. And some of them, on senior housing, the last time they have their place painted is when they die, and then you move somebody else in. That's the reality in Southington, right now. We don't have enough senior housing that's by government. People need the ability to live in dignity. And you don't, and we don't have a lot of senior housing. You heard earlier, 1984. You'll hear, you'll hear a lot of times from the Republicans, "Well, we got this going on." Yeah, the developers are making a lot of stuff, and they're making a lot of money. They don't give a damn about the people who can't afford to live decently. That's something we need to focus on. Val, go ahead.
And just briefly, we have a housing study that has been completed, and it was completed over a year and a half ago, and we need to move that along. There are items on that housing study, action items for the town council, possibly a housing commission to be set up, a housing trust. The Planning and Zoning Commission has started some of the work on that. They are looking at regulations. And the town council needs to work with planning and zoning and really look at this housing study and look at if there, and I believe there is naturally occurring affordable housing. We need to look at that and try to increase that housing so that it's affordable for all our residents, and also the access to transportation for our seniors and our disabled individuals.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what was said. Our, you know, we've invested in new buses for the Calendar House in the years past, including most recently. We're going to continue to invest in busing, and we've expanded our routes on the Calendar House to help our seniors and handicapped who need access to riding. As far as housing, I agree, the Housing Authority is a great place to focus there. Our Planning and Zoning Commission has made regulations to promote, in the last few years, affordable senior housing through development, so we're really proud of that, over 55 communities. The Housing Authority, Mike Early's done a great job. He's been the chair. Steve, you've also are on the Housing Authority this past year or so, and I know Jack has attended a lot of Housing Authority meetings in the past. So, you know, our hope is that we'll continue to focus there. Mike reported out at a council meeting recently about, you know, some of the areas that they've been focusing on improving the Housing Authority. It's taken some months to get there, but we hired a new Housing Authority director. They've upgraded a bunch of the facilities outside and in, and now we have to look forward at further investment. It is a, you know, not a Southington-only program, so we have to consider the funds from outside of Southington as well for that.
All right. Jesse has the next question, and it will go to the Republican side first.
With business owners and town employees running for office in both parties, what's the appropriate way to handle perceived conflicts of interest?
Well, I guess, can you just repeat the question, Jesse? Sorry.
With business owners and town employees running for office in both parties, what's the appropriate way to handle perceived conflicts of interest?
Okay, so I guess, I am a small business owner, so I'll give it from my perspective. There's two ways. So, you know, the system sets up rules, ethical rules, state rules, and, I mean, I think if you play between the rules, and, listen, it's not popular, but I'll even make the argument for it. If you are an administrator in the school system, there is a state law that allows you to vote on the budget. If you don't like the rule, change the state law. It's not a local issue. But there's things that you can do, but you shouldn't do. So, you know, if you're bidding something and you can, you know, maybe you shouldn't. And then there's your black and white ethic rules, ethical rules, that say, you know, you can't vote on something if you have pecuniary interest, monetary gain, things like that. So, I mean, I think you, one, have to abide by the rules that exist, and, two, the rules that you, you know, you should consider and think if you should do something or not.
Even the mere propriety of a conflict of interest, you should recognize that immediately and recuse yourself from any vote. It's happened to me. I own a small apartment building in downtown Southington, and there was lots of, um, construction in the area, and there was an application that was far away. And I didn't have to recuse myself, but I did, because I don't want anyone to think that there's a conflict of interest. And that's what we need to be cognizant of. Um, you want to stay away from those issues. You don't want to be pegged as someone that's, uh, voting for something that could benefit you, especially financially.
Yeah. And you know, I, I, I think everybody who's, uh, at the council and, and a lot of the boards tries to be cognizant of that. A lot of times, we seek the, the, the guidance of our, uh, town's attorney, uh, to, to give us some guidance, so that we can know when, when to recuse ourselves. Uh, you know, there's recently been some information about open space. Uh, I, you know, one of the things we can do is have very transparent, uh, and, and ensure that, uh, the right people are involved and the right people aren't, aren't involved. We had a, a situation with the open space where, you know, I stepped back and allowed town staff to, to follow the protocol and, and negotiate. And I think by doing transparent things like that, uh, is beneficial. We even had, uh, a compliment from Representative Pulis when he was a councilman at the time, that we did everything right in that transaction, and, uh, it was on the up and up. So, we have to continue those type of things.
All right, over to the Democrat side. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My apologies for being late. I had a work commitment earlier, so I'm glad to be here with you now. Um, the, the biggest, strongest way we can do this is looking at our ethics ordinance. And I proudly supported a change in our ethics ordinance about six years ago. Um, and looking in the ordinance itself, it's really clear and delineates any perceived or actual conflict of interest. The other thing that came as a result of that change is all elected officials, not just council members, um, there is a financial disclosure statement, as well as, um, naming any LLCs, any property you own. And I think that's important to disclose to residents. Um, that is available in the town clerk's office. We also all take an oath of office, um, at the beginning of our term, where we promise to be open and honest and transparent. I think it's critical for us to do that. If you do have a conflict, stating what that conflict is, um, and making sure the public is aware of why, um, what the perceived or real conflict is for you.
All right. The next question, um, is kind of in a similar, uh, topic. It's came in from a reader question, Katie from our Voices Initiative. Um, preservation of open space seems to be popular among both parties. Recently, a deal involving land owned by a member of the town council has come under scrutiny. In addition to the landowner recusing themselves for the vote, do you believe a pre-vote public disclosure of ownership should be made in order to allow the public to know that other council members are voting on a land deal involving someone they both personally know and work with? And that goes to the Democrat side first.
I think one of the, one of the arguments I made, I was one of the people that helped craft that ordinance years ago, and I, and one of the things that always aggravates me is, the dirty secret is everybody hides behind LLCs when they're, when they're doing all these different things. It's, the days of, uh, Mr. X goes and buys a piece of property are over. Now it's LLC A, subsidiary LLC B, subsidiary LLC, and it goes on and on and on down the chain. And what you have is, you have a way where nobody in the public really knows what's going on. Personally, I believe the act, the ethics code should be strengthened. I think it should be on a lot of these boards and commissions that are, and I thought this before, that should be, that are making these decisions. And if you have a piece of property in which you're going to have a gain on it, and you're sitting on the council, you're, you're on the council for the wrong reasons. And you need to be careful of that. So I know there's others who want to talk on this, because I know they're passionate on it.
Just to comment on the particular piece of land that you're referencing, um, I voted no for that purchase. And the, the main reason I voted no is I did not feel, um, that property was a valuable piece of open space. Um, a lot of times, our open space purchases are to prevent, um, future development and larger developments. And that particular site is, I walked it. Um, there is, there is a stream running through it. It's on the side of a mountain. Um, so it wasn't really a particularly appealing piece of land, um, for what, for what our mission was with, with open space. And also the concern that the prior open space committee had reviewed that and decided not to move forward with that particular piece of property. So, you know, I think it's important to, to share about the, it, it depends on the piece of land in question. So, that's why I think it's important to share that, that, um, information about that piece of land.
Yes. All right. Over to Republicans.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think, uh, and thanks, Chris, for, for the summary on that. And I respect, uh, your, your opinion, uh, to, to vote no on that. You know, the property was, uh, the property had great geological features. Our town expert in conservation, uh, uh, came, came out and said, hey, listen, this thing's got some really cool geological features. It has water on it. It's, by the way, very close to the, uh, the reservoir at the top of the mountain. Strategic. Uh, you never know what's going to, uh, be required in the future when it comes to water. Uh, it had an approved building lot, already approved. So, I would, I would agree that, you know, it's not going to, it wouldn't prevent huge development. Um, but it does preserve the land, and it provided us access in a strategic way to a larger, uh, you know, parcel, uh, in the, um, in the grand scheme of things. Um, the, the process, completely transparent, um, you know, the, the, it was hands-off. It, we have a, we have a very rigorous process where only town staff and town attorney negotiate. And I thought it was followed to a T. It was disclosed at the council floor, uh, and, um, yeah, I think things went as well as planned there.
All right. Um, the next question is from Jesse, and that would go to the Republican side first.
Is the Southington Police Department understaffed? And how might, uh, the town go about increasing the number of officers, or, or should it?
Well, I'll start, and maybe we could pass it around. It's ours first?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I think, uh, we heard the chief say that, uh, that they were understaffed. Uh, you know, in the last few years, we've been working on that staffing level. Um, you know, we've hired two police officers in the last few years. We've also, by the way, done that. We've, I, we hired five firefighters as well. Um, but we are, we are on a path to increasing the resources. Uh, we do follow the guidance of the police chief and the police commission. So, you know, m- my opinion regarding staffing comes from the police commission and the, and the police chief. So I would say, if the chief says we're understaffed, then we need to add a few more. I think his target was five over the next handful of years. Uh, we got two. Uh, our approach was to follow the, the, uh, the police chief and the town manager, who came to an agreement on staffing this term, uh, this budget cycle, was that we are going to review the budget, and that we fully expected that we would be able to, uh, recruit and hire an officer this January. So we're going to continue the trend of hiring police officers and investing not just in officers, but the tools that they need to be successful.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to correct one error that was made tonight, uh, by, uh, Councilor Perry. Uh, there was no police officer cut from the budget. Okay? No police officer, extra police officer was on that from the police department. However, we did attend some special workshops. They weren't secret. They were, they were there with us, um, uh, on exactly what, uh, the, the police departments, uh, are facing. And he went through, uh, you know, along with his staff, on, on various issues. The first one that came up was actually the Police Accountability Bill. The fact that now, police officers in town, even a simple arrest, had to fill in 15 pages of paperwork, which means that police officers are off the street. They're in, they're, they're becoming paper pushers, not, 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 uh, enforcement officers. And that, that's a real serious issue. It's increased our expenses, too, by the way. So, uh, with the staffing, uh, he, he laid these things out to us. It's something we're going to look at next year, and, uh, and I'm sure you'll see some results.
All right. Over to the Democrat side.
For public safety, first of all, we talked a little bit about the fire department. So, I think that was unanimous vote. We proudly all supported the addition of the firefighters. Special thanks to Congressman Larson, because that was a safer grant, um, that allowed us to properly fund, um, those officers in the first years of implementation. So, um, thank you to Congressman Larson for that. Um, the police department, we, I, I think we all agree that, yes, we need more staff for our police department. Um, I actually, earlier this year, proposed a plan, um, to increase the, the, a number of officers at the police department. And we had a special opportunity. We had increased our municipal operating budget because of municipal retirement services for the town of Southington. That was a state initiative. We found out later, after the budget was adopted, we didn't need as much money as we thought we needed for that. So therefore, I proposed, let's, uh, working with the chief, let's get another officer now. And, and I mean patrol officer, not officers in administrative roles in the building, but officers out on the street to make sure they can spread out, our town is growing.
That's, that's time, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Jesse has the next question, which will go to Democrats.
There was a consultant, um, who looked at response times for the town's fire department, and response times are over the industry recommended times. Uh, is the, um, is the town's fire department, both volunteer and career, the right size for the town? And how might the town go about changing the size of the fire department?
I'll start on it, I guess. It, Southington has a unique, uh, charter mandate in which half of our town is basically, we have volunteers and regular firefighters. And we've struggled with that over the years to find that balance. Uh, I know many volunteers that want to have a more active role in adding to the response time going forward with the fire department. There's a lot of challenges at the fire department concerning this, uh, back and forth between the fire union and the police, or the, um, volunteer firemen. We've had many conversations on that. It's a challenge for the fire commission. They, they battle that all the time, trying to get people to go on, the fire department to volunteer. It's difficult. I, everybody knows this. And it's, it's important for us to support our volunteers. Say thank you to them once in a while. That would, they'd appreciate that, too. But it's a tough job, and it's thankless. Um, as far as the staffing goes, I'll let somebody else go on there, because you guys have more.
So I just, just, I just wanted to point out, the, um, the consultant, I believe that Jesse's mentioned, and there is a study from, uh, a consultant a, a few years ago. There was a large study done for the, for the fire department. So staffing is, is an issue. Response times are issues. I think it's just, it's something that, as a council, we need to work with, um, the fire chief and the, and the fire commission, and everybody working together really should look at this. Obviously, the, the issues between the, with the volunteer fire and the career firefighters, um, it's very important. Public safety is probably the most important thing, uh, for our community. And the fire department, uh, they do an excellent job, and we need to be able to, um, to support them.
All right. Over to the Republicans.
Yeah, I think we've stated a lot that, that public safety is super important to the, uh, to the Republican Party. You know, we've had a lot of discussions around that. We've talked a little bit about some of the funding. Uh, we've also, uh, you know, purchased, uh, new fire trucks. Um, we've, we've talked about the hiring of firefighters, uh, with safer grant, and we're going to now fund that through the budget in the future. Um, but I think beyond those things that we've done, uh, we've actually, sitting counselors here have actually been advised by the town's attorney and corporate council that we're not supposed to comment about, uh, the, the, the current, uh, fire, the current firefighter situation, because we are in arbitration. So we have been notified in writing that we should not be making comments about efficiency and things like that. So I would just encourage the rest of the Republicans on the town council to not answer specifically those, so that we don't affect the arbitration.
Okay. Um, we are getting a little bit closer to the end, but I would like to have a, a few more questions, especially from, particularly from our students that are here, um, so that they can finish off their, the questions that they came with. So the next question would go to, um, Updesh.
All right. So at Southington High School, we have students from all over the country and state from diverse backgrounds, and that diversity in our school system has grown a lot in the last decade. What can the town government do to encourage more diversity in the town overall? And how would you ensure that all members of our community feel valued, respected, and represented?
That would go to the Republicans first.
Um, so first, and personally, I am a Cuban-American woman, and I am, um, in business, and I am an operations executive for a $35 million premium auto insurance company. And I say that because I'm so proud of my background and my heritage. And I think that the way that we can do this is by supporting programs in our community, like our STEPS program. Our STEPS program and our STEPS coalition has received national attention. The C3 curriculum that is taught by our police officers work with our youth, and they spend their valuable time working with our youth to promote asset building, such as promoting diversity. And we're starting from the beginning, and that is so important to our community. And I love the fact that our police officers are making that connection with our youth. That's, that's one of the ways that I'm so proud of our community working on promoting diversity in our schools.
I'd just like to make one comment on this. Um, I would trust the free market on this one in terms of, of, of housing, in terms of where, you know, people are going to live. Because people want to live in Southington. It's a welcoming community. It's a well-run community. It's a financially, um, stable community. Everything that you want here is here, and it's attractive. I live in a development. It's a new development, has 30 houses. Okay? There are five major religions in that development. There are all, you know, there are all, there's a large Asian community. There's, there's, there's large, uh, other communities. It's, it's because we attract that. And it's, it's, uh, that's the future of Southington. Okay?
And because we only have 10 seconds left, I just wanted to, uh, give a shout-out to the Sikh community in town. We had the first, uh, Sikh parade in Southington this year, and I was proud to, to participate in that. So we can, we encourage, uh, people of all backgrounds in Southington.
All right. Over to the Democrats.
Thank you. Um, so the question is on, the question is on diversity, and how do we, how do we promote diversity, I, I think is your, your question. Diversity, cultural differences and things like that. Um, I think one way that we can do that, because we, our community has changed over the years. Um, it, it has, has grown with different cultures, different, um, uh, people coming to town. I think one way we can do that is with a diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, commission that could look, could contact people in our town, um, and see what kind of, uh, progress we could make with that. What are maybe some, um, some events that we can have? A cultural fair. You know, something out at Lake The Drive and, um, that area. Have a, a large cultural fair where all different organizations and people can come, and, um, people can get to know each other from different, um, from different cultures. So, um, per, it's, it's a, it's promoting the diversity is what we need to do, and, um, and see if that gets us somewhere. Thank you.
All right. And the next question would be from Chelsea.
How can you, as elected officials, help ensure that our community provides adequate support for students facing poor internet connections as our generations increasingly has to rely on online resources for schoolwork?
If we go to the Democrats first.
So, one of the things I, I've heard at the doors from a teacher in town, uh, is that they stated that they, they're in one of those elementary schools that has, uh, obviously in need of, uh, some remodeling or just a total rebuild, is that the internet doesn't work, because it's not, it, when the building was built, it was not built based on our technology needs now. So our government needs to be supporting our schools and making sure that we are forward-thinking of what it is. Look at this. This school's beautiful. Last time I was here, um, it was dated. Uh, I, I went to JFK Middle School. So we need to be making sure that we are moving with the times. And again, a brick and mortar building doesn't allow that. In Flanders, uh, Kelly, and Darrenowski, they're having issues with that. And I, I've heard that from, uh, a teacher herself, saying it's frustrating. And then I also heard about the AC. You know, a few weeks ago, we had the heat wave. I, I was in school when there was no AC, and it was horrible. I didn't pay any attention. The teachers didn't want to be there either. So we, we need to invest in our schools.
Just to complement that a little bit more, um, in my day job, I have the privilege of working, um, at the Paulo Middle School, and I see firsthand the need for the internet. All our students are, um, now using Canvas, which is an online learning platform, all web-based, so it, it becomes especially critical. And it's not just the internet, but just generally infrastructure in town. We really have to try to do our, a better job of budgeting and planning for the infrastructure improvement that's needed, um, because it is across all areas. Our Board of Education, in the schools in particular, have made an investment with our, um, IT department to, to strengthen the internet and, again, online learning platforms and learning, learning platforms for all of our students.
All right. Over to Republicans.
You only have to wait a year. Do a GPT chat and ask the GPT, what is the library of the future? And it'll tell you. It's a digital hub for the community. So our new library is going to have state-of-the-art digital equipment in that library, not to mention Makerspace and learning opportunities like we never had before. So, if you need internet, you'll be able to get it downtown.
I would just, I would just add that, you know, if elected, one of the first things that I would like to do is, is, uh, is put in a technology subcommittee together of the town council that also includes education, because I think this is a really important topic. Um, you know, technology at the school, uh, Wi-Fi is one thing, but there's a lot more technology, I think, that's out there. You know, we, we hear a lot about machine learning, AI, robotics, and I think that more investment in technology is what's going to advance us as a community, as a state, and as a nation as well. So I'm a big fan of, uh, of promoting technology.
And, and all those things are core to programming at the new library.
All right. Now, we're at 7:30, so I think we're going to start the, our closing, the closing statements. And since, um, I think the Democrats have the first question, so start, I think, on this end. And we can work our way down. For each candidate gets one-minute, uh, closing statements.
Okay. First of all, thank you to the Record Journal for having us here tonight. Um, it was a great event, great questions, students, excellent job. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Uh, my name is Mike Del Santo. Um, I, uh, been in the town council for the past four years. Uh, before that, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for about 18 years. And before that, I was on the Commissions on Disability for about a year, maybe a little less than a year, back in 2000. Um, so I'm asking for your support this election year for another term on the town council. Um, I'm going to continue to do what I do. Um, I'm going to, my focus is on economic development. Uh, we have, uh, an economic strike committee that I'm a chairperson of. My goal is to get as much business and industry into town, because we all know business and industry is what keeps our taxes low. So I'm going to continue to strive for that. I'm also, uh, the chairperson of the Public Works Committee. We're going to continue there as well. We're going to continue to make our parks beautiful. We're going to continue to work on our roads and our leaves and trees and bushes and all that good stuff. that good stuff. Thank you.
So as you already know, I'm very proud of our Plate of Conservation, our 10-year plan that I've been lucky enough to chair and implement. Um, but beyond that, um, I have been an advocate for open space preservation, historical preservation, and also, uh, the Library Advocacy Committee. Uh, beyond my extent, my extensive community involvement, I believe my business background is going to give me the experience to serve on this council and bring to you my core values, which are fiscal responsibility, strong relationships, and creating efficiency. And I've heard a lot about knocking on doors. I've been to a lot of doors too, and here's what I'm hearing. Keep up the momentum.
Uh, my name's Bill Dietzick. I'm currently on the council. I sit on the chair, uh, I'm the chair of the Ordinance Committee and the Sewer Committee. I'm also in the Order of Priority apparent, uh, small business owner, and then finally an attorney at the end. And I tell you that every time I make a vote, I use all three of those lenses to make a decision. And I, I think a diversity of, of talents up on here and really what, what makes our town great, we need volunteers. I hope one of you guys sits up here one day. It really takes courage to be up here, every one of us. But our system of local government needs volunteers. None of us get paid. We're all here taking time out of our busy, busy schedules, every one of us. Um, so I just would encourage, you know, if, if you have an interest in politics, get involved, run, serve, um, and that's what makes our, our town great collectively.
Thank you, Bill. Again, Paul Chaplinsky, uh, thank, again, thank you again to the Record Journal and all of you who have, uh, put this on. Thank you, Richie. Um, I, I'm most proud of, of sitting up here with, uh, with all of my colleagues up here and, and most importantly, uh, the, the two new people, Tony and Jen, who are, who are joining us. So I ask you to support me, uh, next year, but I also ask you to support, support the team. It's super important. Um, you know, we talked about, uh, you know, being able to, to work together, work across the aisle. We promised to continue to, uh, to do that. Um, I ask for your support because we need to continue the good momentum that we have going forward. We've had great, uh, 0% taxes in the last three years. This year, 4.2, net was 4.6 over four years while inflation is 18%. We'll keep the momentum going. We're going to continue to, uh, to do the good things in the town. I ask you to support the team and I ask you to support me looking forward. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Jim Morelli, uh, again, thank you to everybody that came and, uh, thank you to the audience for being civil. Um, I'm a man of less words and more about common sense. And, uh, I came with Jen through the Planning and Zoning Department when I first started in politics. I was part of the P O C D and I'm very keen on the fact that people in town don't like development. They want to see it curbed at any expense. So I'm proud to also serve with Paul on the Conservation Committee, or, uh, Open Space Committee, sorry. And, um, I, I'd like to end my time with this, um, on a common sense level. We have a budget for this town, 170 some odd million dollars. 110 goes to schools, 63 goes to the police, fire, and public works. So we can't do everything for anybody. We have a budget. We have to live within the budget and we have a long-term plan of the town manager who does a really good job. And so if the people in town don't like the fact that their taxes were up 4.6%, but inflation was up 19, then I think there is something wrong. So again, I encourage you to support us and keep us in position. Thank you.
Hi, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, my name's Tony Morrison. I've been on the Board of Finance the last six years. I was a high-tech business executive in various, uh, companies that you may, uh, you may recognize, 100 million dollar businesses. I ended my career at SAP. Um, in, in, in terms of, um, why I want to be on the town council, on the Board of Finance, you get to examine the money, okay? In terms of fiscal, the fiscal architecture of the town, uh, and how we essentially fund and afford things. But on the town council, you get to see what you're spending, and you get to have a voice in what you're spending the money on, okay? And that's, that's really important. Someone brought up the, uh, the technical issues. That's something that's very close to my heart because those are the businesses I, I ran for the last 30, 40 years. And, and that's the sort of things that I want to take our money and invest in, in future. In, in terms of, um, what you can get out of us, you just, just, uh, see what we've done over the last four years when we've had super majorities, okay? And see what people articulated tonight, which was devoid of facts, okay? Trust us, it's your town, it's, you know, you're going to go, you're going to go to the elections in November. Make sure you choose wisely.
I want to thank the Record Journal as well as everyone that attended and, uh, Jesse and the students for all their questions. It was, uh, an honor, uh, to be here. It's been an honor to be on the council and it's an honor to be running with such a great slate. Um, Team Southington will put Southington first. Um, we will not, you know, look to select who does what and, and based on their, their, their last names and favors, you know, we, we are going to put Southington first and that's what we need. Um, over the last two years, I've held listening events, surveys from, uh, residents and, you know, we, we've all been listening at the doors and it's very important to listen to our residents. Um, I've also pushed forward to changing our procurement in our town to try to be more innovative, um, and forward-thinking. And that's what we need to do. We need to start planning in the future and, um, I, I look forward to your support for me and my whole entire team, uh, on November 7th so we can put Southington first. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dave Zoni and I, first of all, I want to thank the Record Journal as everyone else has and our students that have come tonight to ask us questions. Uh, people ask me all the time, what's the greatest part of Southington? Why is Southington so great? And I always tell them because of the level of volunteerism we have in this community. Every time you turn around, somebody is volunteering to make someone else's life better. Um, I've spent a lot of time in, in government. I spent time on the council. I've chaired so many committees, uh, if I started listening to them now, we'd have another five-minute conversation. I, I worked in the state. I've, uh, was vice chair of committees there. I understand how this all works and I've, I, I certainly think we picked a great team to work, to work together, uh, at this, this time. Uh, we've got people from public service, we've got people from education, we have attorney, myself from, uh, government, and Jack from, uh, our business community. I, I'm looking forward to your support and I'm looking forward to serving again the people of Southington. Thank you.
Uh, thank you Valerie DePaulo. Um, I would also like to thank, uh, the Record Journal. Thank you, Richie, um, Jesse and the students. It's really great to see students here, uh, being involved and asking these questions. Um, so as I've been out, uh, well, first I'm, I'm seeking my, uh, third term on the council and I am extremely excited to be with this team. Um, and I'm excited to be with the entire slate that we have across all the, the boards and commissions that are running this year. As, as I'm speaking with candidate, uh, as I'm speaking with residents, as I'm out campaigning, as I mentioned earlier, I'm hearing, I think, that people want to see a more unified Southington. Uh, they want their voices to be heard and they want to see boards and commissions where people can get along and get some, some work done. So I hope that that's where we're working towards. I think this team can do that. I think this team would be a majority of, on the town council, would be a majority of nine and we would work together with all of the council members and really try to move Southington forward as Southington just continues to keep growing. So thank you very much for your support. I ask for your support for, um, our team Southington. Thank you.
My name's Steve Solerno. I'd like to thank the Record Journal for tonight. Thank the students as well for your questions. Um, we got, this group here got together over the summer. We decided, um, we were talking about, uh, running for council. We came up with the Team Southington because we said, we're going to sit as a group and we're going to put the town first. The town is going to come first, not our party, not our party leader's interest, the town. And that's when we decided we could do this and we will go out to the doors. And as we're doing it, people are saying, we want someone to put the town first. People, that's why we say Team Southington, people over politics. It's a very unique group. We all come from different walks of life, different occupations, and we could take an issue and say what's best for the town. And we would appreciate your support. I believe we could do this. I believe as the town is growing, this is what the town needs now. It's time for the party nonsense to stop and be a town-first party. And that's what we are. Thank you.
My name's Ed Pocock. Uh, again, thanks to the Record Journal. It's been phenomenal. Richie, it's good to see you again. I haven't seen you in years. You know, one of, when you go to decide to join and run for a political office, you just don't jump into that. That's something where you have to be comfortable with the people you're running with. The group that I'm running with here has decided that they want to make the town first. They want higher ethical standards. They want to take care of seniors. They want to make sure that they have housing and they can have dignity. All the issues that I saw that they came up with, I said, boy, this is phenomenal. And when it was town above party, that's what we need. That inclusiveness has been, it's been absent for a while. You have minimal Democrats appointed to public office and appointed boards. And when they want somebody, they're told no. That needs to stop. People notice that. And as far as the kitchen table issues that people bring up concerning taxes, oh no, it's a big issue. I can assure you, people are upset that their grocery bills are going up and they're paying a hell of a lot more for taxes than they used to. And it's a bothersome thing.
Thank you, Record Journal. Thank you, students for being here. Thank you, audience. I know how busy everyone is and taking time out of your evening to come here from us is, is very much appreciated. I can tell you, myself as well as members of my team, continue to promise to advocate for what is in the best interest of our entire community. Um, and we put the needs of others first. Reflecting on some general themes, um, hearing from people in town and many of the questions here tonight, um, one of them that I think can be accomplished with Team Southington is people want quality town services. That means services themselves, especially education and public safety, but also infrastructure. We need to put some money and value into our infrastructure in town and protect that. Next, we need to be open and honest with our residents, especially when it comes to budgeting. That is an extremely important decision. I continue to be concerned about a fiscal cliff that I see coming in next year's budget because of the budget that was approved this year. And finally, people like to hear us working together and working collaboratively. I'm extremely proud to be nominated along with the members of the team and my running mates here. This is a new ticket that does not simply talk about a bipartisan approach, it already delivers it. This is a ticket that has the firsthand experience in what is essential, especially related to public safety and education. And it's a ticket that has numerous years of experience when it comes to preparing our annual budget. Thank you all again and enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right. Well, again, I said it earlier, but thank you to all the candidates for coming out tonight. I think it's really important for voters to hear from the candidates on their issues